Welcome everybody to the September fourteenth Planning Commission meeting here in Guthrie, Oklahoma. Like to first have a call to order. Do we have any public comments not relating to anything on our agenda? That's a no. With that, I'll move forward to our approval of our previous minutes from the August tenth regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll second that.
We need a motion first.
Oh, he called for a motion.
No.
Would you like to make the motion?
I'm an emotional guy.
Do you want to make the motion?
Okay, I'll motion that.
Okay.
I thought you were motioning.
Yeah, sorry, I got the accent still.
There a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Brent Linford?
Yes.
Kaylee Mills?
Yes.
Erin Rooney?
Yes.
And Shelby Reeland?
Yes.
All right, four oh.
All right, moving forward, item number four, PC application twenty-one oh eight, discussion and possible action on a request for approval of a final subdivision plat for one oh three residential lot. For a hundred and three residential lots within the R one P U D. Single-family dwelling district, planned unit development for Guthrie Farms Phase One, located in the northeast quarter of section sixteen, township sixteen north. Range two west, located at the southwest corner of Pine Street and University Avenue. Staff?
Thank you.
Mouthful.
Yeah, yes, it was. Just a little background, back in June of twenty twenty-one, this development went through the process and in on June fifteen twenty twenty-one was approved by the city council. It's a ninety point five seven acre development. Then in July of twenty twenty-one, the planning commission had approved the preliminary plat for the entire subdivision. Again, the ninety point five seven acres in a total of three hundred and eighty-eight lots. What's in front of you tonight is the Phase One, which will encompass as indicated a hundred and three lots on twenty-four point eight acres of the ninety point five seven acres. Phase One will include both accesses that were part of the approval of preliminary plat that are off of Pine Street. Those are the only two that were proposed. The development meets all of the minimum requirements that were allowed through the P U D. Minimum width, with lot width, lot size, right away, all of those things. Just like it was discussed in the past, the floodplain area, there is a portion of it in the very kind of northwest part there, very northern. There's no development in that area, so it's not an issue. The project was basically split between the Logan County Rural Water District and the city of Guthrie. And so there was some kind of delays with that. What ended up happening with this development as well as Hillcrest Farms that will be coming or that was approved a little while ago, in agreement between the Logan County Rural Water District and the city. Basically, the city will be responsible for all of the water in that and the city pays a royalty to Logan County Rural Water District, but again, the city will be the one that will be dealing with all of the water accounts and and all that. There were similar agreements that were done in the Edmund area in that. And then finally, when a subdivision comes in, there's a couple options for a developer. One is to post a bond for the total cost of the improvements. And then at that point, they can go ahead and record their plat. The bond is there, so if one day they decide to walk away, we have the money to finish it out, so it isn't a lost project. The other option is what the developers have done here is to wait for the recording of the plat. Put all of the improvements in, get them accepted, and then at that point, they're able to record the final plat. So there wasn't a bond that was put up for this one, as I indicated, they went and put in all the improvements. So in this case, all the improvements have been put in. The city has inspected them throughout the process and the Public Works Department, fire or fire, planning, all of us are okay with the improvements that were done. So it would not only approve the final plat, but also recommend acceptance of all required improvements as well as the rights of way that now will become city streets. The only condition would be that, as was the condition of, I think, the preliminary plat, that the contractors, developer contractors, will have to post a two-year maintenance bond. That's in there, so if there are issues with the roads or the infrastructure or something like that, again, if they say we're not going to deal with it, we have an ability or a financial means to go and fix that without the city themselves spending the money. So with that, I'll put it back to the commission if you have any questions. The engineer is here, sitting in the front, if you have any particular questions of him.
I would like to ask a question of the applicant. Thank you, sir, for being here this evening. When I was looking at the maps and everything, I noticed that there are two entrances and they're both on Pine. I just had some concerns about if for some reason Pine was inaccessible, it would be challenging for people to be able to get out if they needed to. And I realized it's kind of too late to change this plan, but just wondered if you might consider adding an additional entrance in another area of the project.
So the the two access points onto Pine will meet the requirement of I F C, which allows for, and then we have kind of a looped system through that. So if you think about it, if Pine is inaccessible from one side, it still is accessible from the other because Pine does go all the way through.
Hopefully.
If somebody happens like in the middle, people could still go around, it's not the most ideal situation. A little bit awkward on this site is there's nothing below us. University does not come through. And so there's a big floodplain through there, as mentioned. There is maybe the ability to tie into Drexel, but at the time of our preliminary plat and P U D, you know, it felt like that's such a kind of a small little area with, you know, a few houses in there that it would be, you know, problematic to those neighbors to kind of drive traffic through that spot. That street's not in fantastic condition, there's a small bridge there that would probably need to be completely redone. And so at the time, we just agreed that two access points onto Pine. I think that, as I mentioned, though, I think we do meet I F C, fire, have the ability, so if something happens, you know, something can go around, it's inconvenient, but it's not completely, you know, inaccessible if something does happen there, so.
Yeah.
And then again, we have no ability to tie West either, so it's kind of an odd site, so I don't think that we have really the ability to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I like your comment there, tying in, and Drexel, it could make sense in the future, just that we're not.
We're bringing a street to it, as I mentioned, it's we have a we have a cul-de-sac that comes up that direction.
Yeah.
As I mean, it's just, it's felt like, we do have quite a few houses.
Yeah.
I think there's maybe ten or fifteen on that, on Drexel there. You know, the thought was we have three hundred and something total, if we start, and it's honestly, it'd be a quicker way to get to the city if you went that way, you wouldn't go to Pine and back up. And so it was our thought at the time that, you know, it would inconvenience those neighbors, and so that was the reason why we didn't do it.
Yeah, it makes sense, just not to back ourselves in the corner set in the future if we want to.
As I mentioned, we do have, and you know, we can, we can talk to city staff, you know, there's ability, like I said, we have a, we do have a cul-de-sac that goes that direction. If we want to do something like an emergency crash gate, that way it's not something, like, we can do that in Phase Two or Phase Three, I don't remember when we're actually going to make that cul-de-sac. If we need to do a crash gate with an emergency access that gives us that second point, but then you don't have people using it, we're open to that idea, and we can discuss that with the city and.
Yeah, if you would, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We don't know how, I mean, this area might really take off and this little Elmwood area might might do well and want to see some growth and would love to see actual, you know, south Drexel expand, so.
And we'll look, like I said, we'll look at that, if there, if there's a requirement for us, if we need to give the city staff, and we'll, we'll talk about, whenever, I'm not sure what phase that would be. I think it'll be at least Phase Three, we're going to do Phase Two, which is going to be on the south side, we have plans turned into the city already, and it doesn't go up that direction. And so in Phase Three, if we get to that point and we decide that that's what we want to do, and we want to put, you know, some sort of connection there in an emergency crash gate, I think we'll, we can look at that.
Plus, if you have it the way it's designed, it will keep the traffic from, people from going in there that don't have business in there because there, there's no way to get, go across the subdivision to get out again.
Yeah.
They, it's basically just a big loop.
It is, and again, that was, that was somewhat intentional because we thought that if we did add an access point onto Drexel, that would be a quicker way for people, especially in the back, to just kind of cut through and then be able to get into downtown Guthrie faster. And so it was somewhat intentional to leave that off, but again, if we, if we decide that that's the way we need to go, I think maybe a crash gate with some sort of connection point onto Drexel, but yeah, emergencies only, you know, not for everyday use, we'll, we'd be happy to look at that when we get to that phase.
Yeah, who knows what kind of issues we might run into in the future, since we have options.
Again, we have, we have a street, I don't know if the preliminary plat, you guys had it, I think, in your packet, but the preliminary plat's in there, there's a cul-de-sac that goes that direction, so we can look at making those tie-ins.
Do we have, do we have anybody here from the area? Any comments on this subject? No? Any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Brent Linford?
Yes.
Kaylee Mills?
Yes.
Erin Rooney?
Yes.
Shelby Reeland?
Yes.
All right, four oh.
Thank you, sir.
No problem, thanks. Okay, moving forward, item number five, PC application number twenty-three eleven, discussion and possible action on a request to rezone a property located at three oh three East Lincoln Avenue to R two P U D, general residential. Boy, I cannot read today. To R two P U D for a three-unit residential development. The P U D includes requests for exceptions to minimum lot size setbacks, lot coverage, and parking. Staff, can I get a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commission may remember, this was tabled at the last Planning Commission meeting to give the applicant the opportunity to revise their plan. The Planning Commission was not supportive of the three units and instead of sending it forward with a denial in that, again, gave the applicant the opportunity to redo the development plan. They have brought a development plan back that would only have two units. The and the units themselves will be larger, because again, there would be two units, each of them right now are seven hundred and twenty-six square feet in size. They also redesigned them to make them more compatible, what is typical of the city and especially the original platted area in terms of how they look. To give kind of a little bit of perspective, the now with the two dwelling units, it's basically about fifteen dwelling units and acres, what it comes out to, which is a lot less than what they had before. It'll be a similar development where they'll have, you'll see, you see it there, they have two off the off the street, they'll have the side driveway that comes through there and then parking. As was indicated, the exceptions would be now for two units on a five thousand six hundred square foot lot versus the code required eight thousand. The number of units, because again, they could only put one per that, now it would be two. In the garage requirements, there, as you see on the development plan, still providing parking, it just won't be under a garage. And then finally, the front setback be fifteen feet, which would still be an exception to the code, because the the code would normally require twenty-five feet. Let me see, I don't think there's a whole lot else, because you had my staff report and all of that, so basically with the revised plan, staff doesn't have any issue or concern at this point. I think it is a probably better, more viable option for development of that property as well as that area. So staff recommends approval to allow for the two unit with the exceptions to minimum lot size, number of units, and setbacks. And the only other condition is the standard with any planned unit development, which is if there is any changes in that, they would have to go through the process again to have any changes approved. So with that, I'll give it back to the commission. And the applicant is here as well, if you have any questions of him.
So just to clarify, in the, in the prior plan, there was, they were wanting the option to subdivide.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
But in this new plan, that's not.
Yeah, I was going to say, thank you, Kaylee, the, right, that's off the board as well. There won't be any subdivision of the property, it'll be just two units on one property, whereas you said before, there was consideration, but that's off the table.
Are these going to be rental units or?
I'm assuming, yeah, because they can't sell them separately, yeah.
Boy, this is tough. This, this area is just a very neat, neat area. Do we have any comments from the public? Please state your name and your, we aren't doing the address anymore, I believe.
No, no, they're just name.
Carmen Bennett.
Welcome.
One question. These two units, they'll have garages. My question is.
They will not have garages.
Oh, these.
Just parking, they'll have the parking, but they won't have garages.
Okay. These two units, they're going to be built on how many lots?
Well, it's, it's a five thousand six hundred square foot lot. Yeah.
One and a half.
Of the original, of the original platted lots. But right now, it's combined as a fifty-six hundred square foot lot.
Okay, so two, two dwellings will be built on?
Yes.
A lot and a half.
Yes.
But they're small units. So it's not.
How many bedrooms will these units have?
Two, according to the plans.
I think two, yeah, two, two bedroom.
And that's what they're going to look like?
Yeah, that's what they're going to look like.
I see one, but what, what will the other?
They're both going to look the same, they're both the same.
I mean, how will they be turned? I know they can't be side by side.
Yeah. Yeah, right here, because here's this is the street, and then they'll have to drive out here, but each unit will be here and they'll be facing that way. So, yeah, they're not going to face the street, they're going to face the street.
The porch is actually going to face the street, though.
No.
No?
Be, because they're long.
Oh, no, they are, that one.
You're right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they face north, toward the street.
Yeah, you're right.
Good evening, council. This is Cass, Larry White.
Thank you.
Three oh one, which I have there, in, in.
Representation for Mr. Ross O'Burton.
And we, we were kind of concerned about with that, because we didn't already have the survey done for three oh one, East Lincoln. And I was just looking at that proposed proposal and that project, is that going to run right? Parallel with that property line, if you want to have it already surveyed?
Yeah, there'll be the minimum five-foot setback. Yeah, because you can't build up to a, you can't build up to a property.
What I'm seeing is, if they correct right here, on that property line, it's just probably an inch over from where all four markers are surveyed at.
Right, but the, the houses will actually be on this side, or no, they'll be over here, right?
No, they're on the east.
Yeah, they're over on this side.
So if the driveway, so you're saying there's going to be a little unit here and a little unit there, that being the driveway.
Yeah.
The front of the house will be facing towards the west.
No, it'll be facing towards Lincoln, north, yeah.
Both, both units.
Yeah. The one, the one will be inward, the other one will be facing the street. Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. That, that was my only concern about that, and then also as well, Ms. Mills, as you had brought up to, and Mr. Brent Linford, the, how are we going to do workout with wastewater lines?
So those. Yeah, if you can, cool, thank you.
So the wastewater and all that stuff are going to be on the backside, they're not, we're not going to run them under the driveways. So they're going to be back behind the, the house right there, so there won't be anything that's going to be tied under the driveway, so those are going to have to be busted up, so.
That's going to be on the east side of the house, or are they coming up?
It'll be, yeah, east side.
East side.
So will that be in the east with them?
Yes.
And will all have to be in the east?
Well, it's one property, so no, you wouldn't have to.
What about the neighbor if it's that close?
No, because as long as it's on the property, yeah.
Okay, because they're not splitting the property.
Yeah.
And the last, the last question I had for this gentleman, and then also for us all to be on the same sheet of music, will there be any way to where I get to develop down there around that three oh one to where if that's all just going to be just that wastewater line? It's going that way, it's will not tie into the pre-existing city line that's there?
It will tie in back, yeah, towards the road.
Okay, okay, okay. So the road going back towards the north?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Name is Ken, and I'm a neighbor about two and a half blocks away. I have a concern, and, and, and I don't know if you guys have lived here all your life and stuff like that, and that area used to flood considerably. You'd look back in, in our records, two thousand ten, eleven, something like that, when we had all that rain, used to come off the division and just right where they're looking to build. And then, and if you take a look, we have a couple houses that are just east of that that are vacant, part of the reason why they're vacant. Fifteen or sixteen, whenever we had some more rain, we flooded back in that area. And just for the record, we built that new viaduct coming across over there, right? And, and all this, all that stuff was supposed to have been taken care of, and stuff from the Simron to the Cottonwood, so it wouldn't wind up flooding. And we built that beautiful viaduct coming across there, and then all of a sudden, boom, they finished it up, and we got the rains again. What happened over there when we got those rains? We got a big old pothole right on the, on the north side of that road, at about sixth, seventh, eighth, or something like that. So when we're, when you guys are city council members and planning folks, you guys need to take a look at that, hard look at that. What's going to happen when we get people that are building over in that area? And then we're going to wind up having congestion in that area also, which that's always been kind of a shortcut for all of us that live around here to get over, out to Pine and stuff like that. We don't have any stop signs there. When the corner house that lives on the northeast corner of Lincoln and Broad there, when the family was a little bit bigger and stuff like that, and they had some folks that lived there, and there were some people that were just on the north side that lived there, and then just a couple of those houses that were on the east side, when there was not the very first house, but the next house over, someone was living there, that corner was really, really congested. And it made, and there's many times that people had sit and wait. There were many times that there were accidents that almost happened in that area, and I've seen some of that stuff happen. And you guys will need to wind up taking that into consideration, even though it wind up may meet an ordinance or, or whatever type of stuff that we have, those are some of the off-of-the-record things that you need to take into consideration moving forward with that. I don't know if they, if Trillium even knows that, is it Trillium, right? I don't even know if they even know that, they've been building here for a little while and stuff like that, but some of those things have to be addressed before you guys even approve it. I would also like to see you guys table it until we can have the opportunity to have a look at what the plans are. We don't have a look at what, what they're getting ready to do. We did have the old set, and I was able to download that off, I spoke with Dan a couple weeks ago, maybe it was a week ago, and that version was still not available to us, the citizens, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a floodplain around there?
The very southern part of this property, and that runs along Snake Creek, yeah, but the buildings they're building are going to be outside the floodplain.
Okay, and we.
And just an FYI on that, they're going to have to have some type of cleanouts, and when they have those cleanouts, when it does come to flooding, they're going to, the water's going to get in those cleanouts, even if they have lids on them and stuff like that, especially with the backflow preventer portion of it, because most of us just put a Fernco cap on those backflow preventers, and the water's going to seep in there. That extra addition of that water and stuff like that is going to get over to our treatment facility.
I will second that, what that gentleman said, oh, Larry Whiteley. I will second what that gentleman said, because right there at that three oh one, where the property is, right there on that corner, that's right there, there's a manhole right there. And one day I went up over there and looked at, looked down there, there's mud about that thick. So it's no telling that, I don't know if that line is running east and west and then tees off, or ninety-degree angles off, but if, if that line there, as far as where the city drainage is to that northwest part of that intersection right there, that corner right there, that drain is always clogged. And I can understand the downhill with the sediments and the dirt and everything coming to there, and it just floods back over that way. So it could be up to the city, you often have that approved to at least get that line pulled out, put a new one in, because it's very old. And also as well, it's got a lot of dirt in it. So I, I will second most with that man right there, because that is also creating another issue with that flooding as well, because that water can't run off into Snake Creek and go to its natural habitat.
Yeah.
So if we can address that problem, I see no problem with the developments and the, and, and the building of.
So we do, we do have FEMA flood maps, and they're, they're very well documented, but with, with our talking about the flooding, it has got me thinking here with our, our just previous topic, the Guthrie Farms, there's been a lot of excavating going on in that area, and there's going to be a lot of change in the watershed. I do have a little concern as to what's going to happen with the Snake Creek with all those changes.
I mean, the honest answer is to shut down all development in the community and do a large-scale plan from there, which obviously is not reality.
No, not at all.
I can tell you, this one particular developer is not going to have a significant increase in either traffic or drainage issues within that area. I don't disagree with the fact that drainage and stormwater issues should be looked at and should be with a larger master plan to address or analyze, so when development comes in, they can appropriately implement that plan. We don't have that right now, because even like on the traffic side, we have nothing to require anybody to do anything for traffic. But it's also needs to be understood, development creates traffic, period. You know, a lot of the traffic issues we have are single-family developments like we, you know, have.
Yeah.
And so again, if you want to cure traffic, then we just need to get rid of cars.
Well, and so my, my point to this is, is it's not, I don't think the government or our right to regulate it, but I do want to make the property owner aware, you know, you have a valuable asset, and, you know, to build something and then for what's happening down the street, it could possibly affect you. So to, to be diligent on it, and I guess as a community to, to let you know about these different concerns, because if we make mistakes like this, they're set in stone and would. They don't change. Your oops will be there for, you know, fifty years staring you in the face as a tradesman. Sometimes it's hard to see see those mistakes, because we put our sweat and our, you know, our blood into these things, we want them to be good. And not only that, I've driven through that area, and it is a really neat area, I can really picture some beautiful views out of second-story windows in that area, and, and walkout basements, and that, that area is neat. I would love to see a two-story house with a walkout basement, you know, where you can see the Snake Creek and you can peer over the trees into the field, and it could. I would love to see a two-story house with a walkout basement, you know, where you can see the Snake Creek, and you can peer over the trees into the field, and it, it could be really nice. But I also get the economic side where we need housing and, and we need affordability, so, uh.
I, I live over in that area, I, I like the idea that houses coming in, but I'm also concerned about the rental aspect of it. Because when you bring the rentals in, you're gonna bring a certain class, I don't know if it's that way, but people.
Yeah.
And they don't care, and if you go over there now and ride around, you will look, you can look and see in front of the houses that are rentals.
Yeah.
Stuff is piled up this high, I've got pictures on my camera there, and, and it's like a little four-block area. If you ride around over there, you'll see it, and I've turned it into the city council twice, and, and it's on, it's on the books that, that they're supposed to take care of it.
Yeah.
And it's nothing been done, so I see rentals, if they're not nice, coming in there. And what's gonna happen is you can bring that class of person in there, and then it's gonna start filling up. And my mom lives right there on that corner, and I know what that's like. The house right across the street from where they're building, that guy there doesn't take care of his too, and we go over and cut his yard, I do sometimes, just to keep it looking good.
Yeah.
And, and I don't like that, I don't want my neighborhood to go down. If I didn't live there, maybe I wouldn't think of it, if you don't live there, then it doesn't matter to you.
And no one wants to see.
But if you live there, it makes a difference to you.
And it does when you're, you know, you're making a substantial investment here, and the, uh, the landlords, you know, they need to be capable and, and to care, be part of the.
Yeah, the only comment I'll make, cause I could do a dissertation on that whole thing, but.
And I'd love to listen.
Our code enforcement would say otherwise. Uh, we're probably fifty fifty, uh, with most all code enforcement cases, uh, meaning that half our problems are single-family owned properties. And half our problems are rentals. Uh, we do not see a significant uptick in rentals being a greater issue than single-family owned properties. In fact, as you guys know, most of the houses we have to tear down because of the fact that they're in bad shape and all that. Are because single-family owned, and the owners don't take care of them.
Yeah, there's people stretched thin and having hard times everywhere.
I just.
But I do appreciate the work the city puts in, very hard work, you guys are doing miracles with the resources that you have, and thank you very much. Do you have any further, any further questions?
Um, I, I did just wanna clarify something, we, we were talking earlier about the, um, units, they are identical, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and they will both face north, the street, right, okay, just wanna clarify that. I do, um, I do really like this better than the last one, so thank you guys for reworking that and taking our input. Good job, good job, they're nice, yeah, I appreciate you guys taking our input and, and, and reworking that, so thank you.
Um, so again, once we put in this PUD, if they decide to make any changes, they'll have to come back through this process.
Yes, yes, there's provisions for minor, uh, uh, for, uh, minor changes. But any major change would have to come back. And, and minor changes is like, for instance, where, you know, the house may be approximately here, and we gotta move it a little bit, when you, you know, that type of thing. But nothing minor is to where they can add another unit, or, you know, do anything substantial, that would require to go back through this, uh, whole process.
I have, I have one more.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
If, if we do this, which you are, I can tell, but if you do this, and we see that this is bringing in wherever, then can we stop doing that? As if we don't let these tiny homes take over in our neighborhood, it's like. I mean, if, if this is done, they're done in six months, and they don't take a long build. There comes a people living in it, and then they put in the application for another lot, same way, put in three or four more. And then we look at the cars that are parked there, cause if you have two-bedroom home, ain't no way in heck you're gonna have two cars there.
Yeah.
It doesn't work like that.
Well, and what we wanna see.
Five or six, and they gonna have to park on the street.
I just have one more question, and this is gonna. How many different exceptions are, are we making here?
Uh, four.
Four? It's become a pattern here in Guthrie that we're doing that.
Yes, cause we have outdated codes that aren't consistent with modern development.
And, uh, I'm gonna answer that for you folks, the planning division, if we have outdated codes, and we got outdated ordinances. Then it is the city's responsibility to do an overview, as you were talking about earlier, and that does have to come into play. Before we continue to make exception after exception after exception.
Just to note, I've been trying to do that, our comprehensive plan, which is the plan he's talking about, has never been implemented. So I've been trying to implement that, uh, plan, which would actually allow for this type of development to be done by code, or by right.
Yes, and, yeah, we've, there has been a new code in the works, you know, these documents are, are daunting, to say the least, to get started, and then to review. You know, cause we don't wanna wind up with the same thing that we have, but at the same time, we don't wanna stagnate, so, you know, and prevent people that have made serious investments. It, it's a tough place to be, um, I do agree with what you said.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I am concerned, I seriously believe in housing diversity, we need to see big houses, you know, little houses, multifamily complex. We need to have a place for everybody in our community, and for us to be able to take care of each other. Um, you know, I, I have a little concern about filling this area up with too much affordable housing, and not enough upper bracket housing. Um, so, you know, I do hope that in that area you'll see some beautiful homes, cause I think this is a beautiful area, and it has some serious potential. That, that people will just go gaga over, so. Well, um, with all of our comments, I, you know, I hope you.
Carmen Bennett, I'm still trying to understand. When you build a new house, as I understand, I don't know what code or whatever. The house is supposed to have a garage. Is that a code, or, or what?
Yeah, it's per, it's our current code that, uh, you have to have a garage.
So why aren't these having garages?
Cause they're getting, well, they're asking for an exception to it. I mean, I, I can tell you after the, uh, meeting, I can explain more, some of the rationale and why garages themselves are. Not always conducive to affordability, but, yeah. The critical part is parking, which they are, um, address, addressing or meeting, they're not getting an exception for parking requirements. It's just, they're not going to have it covered, yeah.
And I, and I have noticed, um, on East Harrison, probably in the sixteen hundred block, where they air-built. A whole lot of little houses, and these houses do have garages.
Yeah, cause it's a current code, yeah, it's a current code, yeah.
I have a comment, I don't usually say too much. But I still just want on record that I could see that's a lot in half, where you're wanting to put one house in there. And that's still where you would have to get a variance, and it would have, um, the ability for two cars, maybe even more of it. Because of that location, I'm not against two houses on a lot, I just think right where that curve is, you're asking for trouble. When you're putting two houses in there and doubling the amount of cars that will be in that little area.
What is this, the setback on houses close to that area, is fifteen foot pretty similar to what, what's already there?
Yeah, most of it, cause, uh, like much of the original platted area, most houses are about fifteen feet. Uh, when the zoning code came in, it gave it twenty-five feet, which is pretty much standard everywhere, you know. Uh, in that, but even in the overlay district, there is no specific front setback. It's based upon the average, um, average of the houses in, in that block. So it could be fifteen, it could be twenty, it could be ten, uh, the whole idea was to keep the houses, uh, in line, so you can keep the character of that block. And the aesthetics of that block.
Yeah.
But this is obviously outside of the overlay district, it's still in the original platted area, but outside the overlay district. But from, I would say probably ninety percent of all the houses that were built in nineteen fifty or before. Are probably around fifteen feet or closer.
I have a comment for that, and, uh, when you look down that street, all the houses on the south side of that street going down, cause I live in that area, and I travel quite frequently. Are all, the setback off that street is all equal, when you look down that row, and then even if you go four or five blocks down that row. They're all equal, and they're all twenty-foot.
Well, I just have two issues right now, one. One being, I, I'd like to go and verify the setback situation, so I actually have three concerns, the setback situation. Two, I don't think this area, that area needs affordable housing, I think it needs some anchor homes. Call it some upper bracket homes to really anchor the neighborhood. And then, three, I am also concerned about what kind of flooding could be happening there, but that's more of a property owners. I would, I would be concerned, I would build my house high if it was me, I just, cause I don't know what's coming in that area. But I, I hate to say it, but right now I kinda wanna table it again, to.
What, what are we gonna table it for?
To verify the, the setbacks in the area.
What setback are we verifying?
The twenty-foot, to see where all the other houses are at, so it's not sticking out like a sore thumb.
So who's gonna do the survey for all the properties along that block to verify that they're all at twenty feet, cause that data's not available? Do we have the homeowner that spoke that has a survey that shows all that?
Do we already have one, did I miss it?
No, what I'm saying is we don't have any data to show that it's twenty feet.
Yeah, and he's saying that the city is not gonna wind up doing it.
Oh, we can't just go look?
The what?
We can't just look?
I don't have any verified property lines to go off of, unless I have a survey.
Yeah.
But I have to ask the honest question of what's the difference between twenty feet and fifteen feet?
We made that exception.
Other than it's five feet, yeah.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, that's been a standard procedure in the city of Guthrie to, to go ahead and allow for less than the, the twenty-foot, or whatever that setback is. It's gone before the bowl before, and, and we've approved that several times in the bowl.
Yeah, our set, we've got setbacks all over the place, really, it's hard to.
If you wanted, you can make a condition that that northern house be in line with the other houses on that block.
Is there room in the plan?
Yeah.
To move that house back?
Yeah. Or back, I mean, either way.
I would think with respect to that corner, it would rather be rough.
If it was setback, we're up for it.
Or in line with the house that's right next to it.
Yeah.
Well, there's only two houses there.
Yeah.
So, and both of them are in line.
I don't think that's unreasonable to ask, cause it's not gonna have that big of an impact.
So, I'm looking at the design of this lot, and off of Lincoln, there's, there's twelve feet. Back to like the parking area, so are you saying like, push five feet into that?
No, the, I forgot to mention that plan on there essentially got flopped. The fifteen foot is actually to the front, and the thirty-four feet is to the back, cause if they do what the plan shows, they're building in the flood plain. Cause originally, they were going to have a fifteen-foot setback from the front, and then move them up more northerly, so they stay out of the flood plain.
I, I see, yeah, okay, so.
But the five feet, I don't think would be a critical, if it's five, I, I don't know.
So the northern house actually sits thirty-four feet off this street?
No, it would be.
According to the plan, it does put that.
But that's the, yeah, the plan needs to be flip-flopped.
Okay. So are they saying that like, Lincoln is actually right here?
I believe so, so, oh, so then Dan, just to make sure that we're viewing this right, so from this plan, this flip, Lincoln would actually be up here?
Yeah, for the most part, yeah, yeah, cause it'd be fifteen feet from the property line.
Same with it, it'll be house, and then parking, and then house, and then parking, and, or.
Yeah, yeah, the parking would basically be on the, on the back part.
But the house is on.
I tried to get an updated plan, but I didn't get one in time.
Yeah. Well, this is. I'd like, like to see an updated plan.
Yeah, I do too.
It affects a lot of people, you know, I, I hate doing this to y'all, but.
But like I said, I, I, I would much, I would.
One slows better than twice fast.
Trying to collect my thoughts. My concern is we haven't given, you haven't given any input to the property owner to do a reasonably revised plan. Cause one is it's in the flood area, so you can't build, period, we can't do that.
No, that, that's just a suggestion, that, I don't wanna.
But the other one was a setback, and so, like I said, if. You want to state that it be in line with the other homes within that block, or.
I don't wanna regulate anything, I just don't know where it's gonna line out, and if it's gonna look.
Well, that's why I said, that's why using the, it has to line up with the existing homes work, because then you don't get into the, you know, is it fifteen feet, twenty feet? Twenty-five feet, eighteen feet, you know, it lines, cause like I said, that's what we do with the overlay. Is we have the same thing where it just lines up with the front, that way you don't have to worry about an arbitrary number to put in there.
Well.
Yeah.
So can we table it until we have a revised plan?
If you want to do that, you can, sure.
I do like that.
I was just, like I said, making sure that we had kind of more concrete.
No, that's good.
Information, so they can go back and do so.
Yeah.
Cause what, what was the other one you mentioned?
Uh, again, just that this neighborhood needs an anchor home, it needs a, housing diversity.
I.
It gets too much low-income housing.
Right, I get that, but the problem is we can't regulate that, it's like regulating competition in the commercial.
I agree.
We, we don't do that, cause even right now, today, if somebody wanted to come in and put a seven-hundred-and-sixty-five square foot house on their one. They could do it, without going through any public process, they go through the building permit process, and we do it. And if somebody wanted to choose to do an entire block of those, they can, uh, obviously. Cause again, we don't have any minimum, uh, size of homes, all we require is that it has to constitute a dwelling unit per the building code. You know, you have your kitchen, bedroom, you know, uh, certain size bedrooms, all of that, but the square footage isn't regulated. So I just, like I said, just wanted to point that out.
But, a lot of them are just regulated, so if they want a seven-hundred and some square foot house, they have to have two lots to put it on.
What do you mean?
Takes two lots.
To build a house.
No, most of the, most of the lots within the original platted area are, are basically legal lots of record. A lot of them are non-conforming to current standards, because they're under six thousand square feet in that. So, right now, just like the subdivisions that come in, if they, uh, are creating a lot, the minimum they have to do is six thousand square feet. Uh, but our original platted area, like I said, those are legal lots of record that we essentially just have to deal with at this point. To, uh, you know, do what we can, obviously, being a little bit smaller, it would probably shrink the, you know. You automatically shrink the size with setbacks and all that, but we have twenty-five foot lots, wide lots, that have been redeveloped in town. Because, uh, they're legal lot of record, you can't tell somebody they can't build on their lot, because it's. You can't tell somebody they can't build on their lot, because it's slightly under the minimum, because those were created well before the current ordinance is.
We have great looking houses that have no setback, they're right off the sidewalk. So it, I think it just depends on the neighborhood, it's tough to regulate.
Now, they couldn't rezone it, they couldn't rezone it and put another unit on it without going through the process. Yeah, yeah.
You just answered that question.
Yeah.
So you're.
Yeah. Cause even if we went, even if they went with a straight R two rezone, they couldn't do it, because it's too small.
So nonconforming lot has to wind up, if someone's gonna build on it with a building that's not been there for, uh, that's been there gone for over a year, a nonconforming lot then has to go through this process?
No, that's, that's a user structure. The lots pretty much are what we have, like I said, because they were all, the, the subdivisions of our community, the subdivision of this portion of our community was done, obviously, well before zoning. It was done in the early nineteen hundreds. Uh, you know, I think the latest subdivision was nineteen fifty, early sixties? Our zoning came into play in the, in the mid to late sixties. So we're kind of, you know, we have what we have. But again, like in our zoning code, it says you have to have eight thousand square feet to put a duplex. So obviously, a lot like this, even if we just rezoned it, you could not put another unit on there. That's why we have to go through the process for the exceptions.
Which we won't if we have our updated building or zoning code. So contact your local, uh, city councilman.
So this plan that we're looking at is not the plan we're talking about?
It is with the sense of the density, the look and that. It just, like I said, it literally would be flip flop. Nothing would change other than how you see it on the paper.
Well, it.
It's confusing.
I, I have all this. If you flipped this over.
However, if you want, I told the applicant, if they wanna build it like this, that's fine, but they're building in the flood plain, so they're gonna have more issues.
Yep.
If they have the, the two cars side by side on the back of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
Then, uh, the, you're gonna have to have a single parking place in the front and another one in between the two houses, and then the two in the back.
No, they're required to have two spaces. That's per current code.
Two spaces, spaces for each house?
No, one space for a single family.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but that, that means that it isn't the same thing as, well, yeah.
Yeah, well, all I'm saying is they're providing more spaces than what they're required to do.
Okay.
Yeah, cause they only need two total.
If you flip this over, then the two cars, or where the two cars are close to Lincoln here, they would be in the back of the.
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
So which means that the two cars, one is parked on the side of the house and one is parked between the two houses, that would be in the front.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes, yes.
So you couldn't park a hu- a car in the driveway down there near the, near Lincoln? Uh, the access driveway, because you gotta get back there to park the other cars in the back of the.
Right, but what I'm saying, I guess what I was trying to say is they may eliminate that most northern space, because they don't need it by code.
So there would be three spaces?
Possibly.
But that's enough? That's more than enough?
Two's enough, yeah.
Technically.
Yeah.
Okay, so just to circle back to how far we've made it here. So we all are in agreeance that we would like the front facade of the frontmost unit to match.
Setback wise, yeah.
Setback wise, to match, to be similar or complementary to what's in the area. Fair enough. I don't think we have, um, anything else other than, uh, words of warning. Is that correct? Is anybody kinda missing anything? Um, also, just to let you know that once we do do this PUD, we have had issues, unfortunate issues in the past, where we locked them into a PUD, things changed, and then they had to go through this process again to get the, the PUD removed. So, just another warning. Do my, uh, do y'all have any comments from there? Is the owner here of the property? No? Okay. Do you have any words on his behalf?
I'd like to know if they plan to do that, do this again.
This owner only owns this property.
Okay, but, but it's Trojan.
Now, we, now, truly, we own a lot.
Is Trojan gonna start putting the tiny homes on all of their lot? Because I see Trojan buying things, watching it too.
Well, you've seen the houses we've built.
Yes, I see.
Okay. Can I try again?
I've got lots outside.
Me too.
And they're not in the flood plain either.
This one's not our lot, so.
He's not here.
So do we have a motion?
Going on, hold on to live, this is a big decision, he's not here. We've got a lot of people that live in the area that care very much, and that, that are here.
I'd like to see.
My heart and my head are heading in different directions right now.
I'd like to see a revised plan and how it's actually gonna be.
Okay.
Yeah, I would too.
And then I can try to get him here on the next one.
Yeah, just so, just so he hears some of the concerns.
And will be, we'd be able to pick it up on the, uh, city council, the commission meeting might have been before.
The agenda with all the.
No, we can go there on, online and pick up the meeting from before, and we can see that plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the agendas are there from the last meeting, this meeting, and then they'll be for the next meeting. But yeah, what was there originally proposed, and then this one? Yeah, yeah, you can get it online.
See the one that's coming up? Would we have to wait till after the meeting?
You would have to, for the one that'll be to the next meeting? Yeah, it'll be posted like, on the Monday before the meeting.
So the Monday before, we can pull it up and see?
Yeah, yeah, and I'll tell you what that meeting is, hold on.
So technically for that new revision of how it's gonna be set in stone on that three oh three problem?
Well, and keep in mind that after it goes through us, it will still have to go through city council. So you won't just get blindsided.
We basically have no teeth.
But we, we do wanna.
Yeah, be October for the councilman. So it'd be posted that Monday? Well, that's Columbus Day, so it'll probably be posted that Friday.
And you can let your, uh, your customer know. Uh, I wouldn't be opposed to a special meeting if we have to.
No, it's, yeah, no, we don't need it for one item, but, no, yeah, I know, but, uh. So anyway, I was gonna go back, so there's a motion to, is there a motion to table it till the October twelfth meeting pending a revised development plan?
I'll motion it.
Perfect. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Brent Linford?
Yes.
Kaylee Mills?
Yes.
Aaron Rooney?
Yes.
And Shelby Vreeland?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's October twelfth.
Okay, that was a big one. That's, uh, moving forward to item number six. PC application twenty-three thirteen, discussion and possible action on a request for special use permit to allow for a twenty by twenty-four carport in the side yard of an existing home for a property located at three oh nine Amzie Lane?
Amzie Lane, yes.
Amzie Lane.
On the south side.
Wonderful, staff, do you have a report for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as indicated, this is a special use permit for a carport on the side of the house. Per our current codes, uh, or per current code, any accessory residential building that is, uh, on the side or in front of a home requires a special use permit. Uh, so obviously, that's why, uh, we're here. The applicant is requesting approval to, for a four hundred and eighty square foot, uh, carport on the side yard of his existing home. It would be actually on the eastern, uh, side of his home, uh. I think it's east. Yes, yes. Eastern side of his home. The, all the other requirements in terms of size, in terms of the number that he's allowed for his property, uh, height, all of that, uh, meets code. The only issue is, uh, location. Uh, cause even lot coverage, as I indicated in there, it still won't put the lot over to lot coverage. Uh, like all the properties in that area, they're all larger, uh, properties in size. Uh, this one happens to be twenty-three thousand, uh, square feet. Most of them are right around that half acre, uh, some a little bit bigger. Uh, cause when that area is subdivided, just like now, there's no sewer, so they needed to have the larger lots. So having said that, um, the, the only thing that I, I guess wanna kinda mention or put out there is, is, um, there's not any other properties on Amzie Lane there that have an accessory building or a carport on the side of the house. Uh, in that, and then, uh, there is, he's proposing a metal, um, carport, and the only building in the area that has metal is a large shop that's right there at, uh, I think it's Sooner and, I think, Amzie, or the block over. But anyway, I just wanna mention that, because this is one of those things where it comes down to it. I, and I don't mean this the wrong way, it's not a big deal to me. Because it's not a, uh, if you wanna say a land use, it's, it's a character of a neighborhood aesthetics type consideration. And that's primarily why I think the code was made the way it is, to have a special use permit. Cause if you're gonna put it in the backyard, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind. But if you're gonna put it in the side yard or the front yard, we're gonna have some discussion. So having said that, you know, staff doesn't have any issue, uh, in that.
We did send out notice to all the neighbors, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and I did have one of the neighbors come in and con- or contact, or came in and talked to me. Uh, some of the neighbors, I think, were discussing it, but none of them reached out to me with any formal writing opposing it, uh, whether it be letter or email. And I don't believe we have any here tonight, cause these were for the last item. So that's obviously something you can take into consideration. And, and the reason, and, and I should state, he can have metal by code, because the, uh, overlay that, um, designates areas that are to be metal and not metal basically stops at industrial, which is well north of this. Everything's south of industrial, there are no limitations on metal or non-metal. So with that, I give it back to the commission, and the property owner is here, if you have any questions of him.
So you said the only issue with this is the location?
No, what I'm saying is, yeah, the location necessitates the review. Yeah, cause if he were putting this in the rear yard, he could do it by code and just get his building permit and move on. But because it's in a side yard, or even like the one we had on Lambre, you weren't here, but we had one on Lombardi Road that was in the front, that's when it necessitates the special use permit and the review.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Man, I can't believe you're not just going the easy route, you know, raising the garage door up and getting a whole new garage door.
I would love to be able to get my truck in the garage, my, my wife, Paul Hollis.
Welcome, sir.
And, uh, let me just say, I recently moved to Guthrie, we love it here, my wife and I.
Welcome.
And, uh, we, uh, we're very proud of our home, love it, beautiful home. And, uh, that being said, um, I would, I read over the codes. Back up, my truck doesn't fit in the garage. Wife's car does, that's good. Uh, been down the road with, uh, having a totaled roof and totaled vehicles from hailstorms. Hopefully, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, plan on it.
We all know, but I'm planning on it, and, and that's, that's just, yeah, economically hard to take. So I wanna protect my truck, obviously, it's a nice truck. Um, I would love to follow the code, I have no problem with the codes, except there's lateral lines from the septic tank in the backyard. There's no place for a carport there. Um, and if, if you noticed on the picture before, it's got the vehicles in the driveway, the previous owner, I guess.
Yeah, this is an old one off a Google.
I'd like to have my, not, see my, see, people see vehicles in front of the house. Um, like to have it on the side. Planning on putting some fencing in front and some landscaping, uh, evergreen trees, so it's obscured from the, the cul-de-sac. And, and also, even if I could put it in the back, our neighbors in the back, they're always out in the backyard. We're always, you know, interacting back there, and it's be in their face too. Not just people coming down the, the cul-de-sac. So anyway, um, wanna make it visually minimal, and, uh, that's all I have, and, yeah, just. And, and look nice, look less, and, yeah.
Appreciate you wanting to protect your assets.
Absolutely.
And I can add, uh, he does bring up a good point, uh, with a lot of properties in that area, or obviously the properties that have, uh, septic. Uh, it looks like a large amount of area, but obviously, because of the septic, a lot of that area is taken up with, uh, the septic system and, uh, you know, as he said, the laterals and that. So it does make some properties appear to be developable, but it does limit the areas in that that can be, uh.
I don't know if this is in our wheelhouse a concern or not, but it's a thing for me, drainage, uh, water runoff, just, uh, thinking about it.
For this particular item, not necessarily, but that is something that we look at when they go get their building permit, and that we, you know, make sure that things are gonna work properly, so we don't have an issue with neighboring properties in that. Uh, cause as you can see from the photo, there's a slope there on the side, so it's probably gonna have to dig out some area in that, and so there's some work to do. Uh, this is more for, again, uh, saying, you know, this type and this location is good, and then we kinda take care of the rest through the permitting process. I did wanna, I did want to, before we, after, if you're done discussing, I forgot to, uh, mention the conditions that I thought would be appropriate for that.
Yeah, that's fair.
So, uh, so staff had recommended approval of the location. Uh, the carport be limited to four hundred and eighty square feet inside, cannot have sides, and must be located as shown on the site plan. Uh, two, the driveway access to the carport and parking area under the carport must be paved. And then finally, a building permit's required. Uh, number two is a code requirement, but I'd just like to put that in there, so the applicant and everybody's aware that, uh, it has to be hard surface, cause that's what our code currently requires for any drive access parking area.
All right, someday I'm gonna convert you on the, on the hard surfaces.
There's some changes coming. I'm not a big, big fan of creating additional impervious surfaces, but we have what we have.
They create issues.
Yeah.
Do you have any issues with the, or sorry, do y'all have comments first? Do you have any issues with the requirements he stated?
No. That's what I plan to do, is I want rats in the yard, and, uh, Jason Rice doesn't want rats in the yard. Next it is, he's my neighbor.
Wonderful. We like neigh- good neighbors.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll take it in.
Brent Linford?
Yep.
Kaylee Mills?
Yes.
Aaron Rooney?
Yes.
Shelby Vreeland?
Yes.
All right, four oh.
Thank you for being here tonight.
All right, moving forward. That was our last item, staff, do you have any other comments?
Nope.
No, all right, sorry about the long meeting, everybody, good discussion. I really appreciate all the participation. Misses, do we have any additional comments?
Yeah, just thank you all for being here and giving us your input, that is helpful to hear your perspective, so.
Anybody want my paperwork, they can have it.
I'll take it.
Wonderful. Well, on that note, this meeting's adjourned.